Call the meeting, the order for Monday, April seventeen, twenty twenty-three at six oh one P M. Everyone could rise and turn to the flag for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I think it's not one. Susan, would you be willing to do roll call, please?
Sure.
Stazinski.
Present.
Andrews.
Present.
Reardon.
Present.
Layton. Walsh.
Present.
Garland. LaRose, present.
All right. Agenda. Anyone notice any conflict of interest? All right. Like to make a motion to approve the agenda for Monday, April seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion by Andrus, second by Walsh. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any public comment? No public comment. All right. Approve all the minutes for March twenty, twenty twenty-three.
I just would like to add just more wording under ten, business before the Parks Commission, A. And it just states, LaRose wished to thank the library and then MSU Extension, but can we add the words MSU Extension, Master Gardener Program? Because that is the real name. It's not just MSU Extension, it's the Master Gardener Program. If we could just add that in there. Other than that, I see no other clarifications.
Master Gardener.
Program.
Program.
I'll move to approve the minutes with suggested edits from Commissioner LaRose.
Second thought. Motion by Walsh, second by Andrus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is there any correspondence that we need to add? All right. Reports. Treasure report. Garrison.
Standard payroll and then five thousand put in for the third maintenance agreement.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? On that.
I'm not sure if this would fall under treasures report, but I saw that there was some job postings for maintenance workers.
Yeah.
Curious, did the...
Yeah, I was, I was gonna talk about it under my staff comments.
Okay.
But that's fine, you asked a question. So Bob is retiring June first, so that position's being advertised as a full-time and a part-time position to see if there's interest in one way or another to move forward with that.
Okay. So I'm sure that may affect the, our treasure report with the amount of money we need to maybe budget.
Are they gonna be contracting that, subcontracting that out? Or is that part of the equation or not?
It depends. If it's part-time, then there'll be more contracts for some of the regular work or bigger projects versus having the grounds person take care of that if they're full-time. So maybe some additional, you know, snow plowing and mowing and other services that are currently handled by the full-time employee.
Do we anticipate a new hire full-time would cost more or less than Bob?
I don't have that answer, I don't know.
All right. Moving on, if there's no more questions regarding the treasures report. Subcommittee report, community garden.
We did, we did meet last month and we finalized the, what you see in front of you, the management plan. And Elise, myself, and Nate were present. So anyways, so I think we'll talk about it again.
Okay.
I see it's an agenda item.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Sarah, would you like to?
Sure. So I just have a couple. I talked to Beth on my way over here with a couple of updates. Arbutus Five, they have done their pre-bid meeting, not, yeah, like the pre-construction meeting, not pre-bid. And they've determined that Arbutus is gonna be closed for the summer. I think at one time it was talked about maybe having some of it open or not, but they determined that it'd be better to just say that it's closed. If they get an opportunity to be able to open a portion of it and it's safe to be able to use it, then they will. But instead of telling people that the park may be open this time or that time and being disappointed because it's closed because of construction, it's just for the summer, it's closed. I don't know, I think you saw an email about trail cleanup at Killingsworth and Grace that came through. So that's being worked on. And then the Autumn Olive at Killingsworth as well. You saw the email for that, so that'll be this summer. And then we talked about the employment. And Beth also has RFPs out for snow plowing, lawn care, and janitorial services right now. Because those are kind of some of the things that, if it's a part-time employee, that they may need to be contracted out. And that probably will go into play with the salary and what that looks like.
So, so say that again? So she's looking for like snow removal and trash removal during the summer or...
Like janitorial would be like cleaning the restrooms, those items. Snow and then lawn, mowing, grass cutting.
And then a maintenance person to do everything in between all of those.
Right. Yes. Kind of keep everything running and making sure the contractors are doing the right things and...
There's enough, about three years' worth of warranties from these audits from the parks.
Maybe they'll hire a full-time and a part-time.
Do we know how long Bob worked here?
I do not know that. I want to say it's been, I mean, it's been many years, right?
I think it's been some time, but I do not know.
I want to say thirty or twenty.
But he's probably retiring like the top end of the pay scale. In theory, a young guy would get hired at a lesser rate.
In theory.
Yeah, but didn't he, wasn't he only a part-time employee or was he full-time?
He was full-time.
Was he full-time?
Yeah.
My mistake, sorry.
He's been forever, yeah.
All right. If there's nothing else there, let's move on to business before the Parks Commission. Nine A, community garden governance. Elise, would you like to talk on that?
Yeah, I can sit at this table.
Yeah.
Okay, so everyone has the PDF we sent over, right? It's called the government or management plan. So much of this should look like summary information for you. So we start with, you know, what we were doing, as I mentioned last, at the last meeting, was that this is, this is part plan, but it's also part, maybe, grant application narrative, right? Like hopefully you can pull language from this document to justify why the garden is needed, why you've selected the design you have, you know, to show that there's a plan in place to, you know, how you're gonna run this thing. So, so we kind of start just broad strokes. If someone's never heard of this project, what do they need to know to understand how we got here? So there's an overview, background, a summary of the engagement and communications that we've done with the Township Parks Commission, you, with our stakeholders, and with the community at large. And then we move through to a site description, just to orient folks to where it is we're talking about. We reference this site a lot verbally, but a lot of people just need, you know, it's helpful to see that aerial, to understand where, where, where in East Bay we're looking and where at the township we're considering. A photo from a day not unlike today, probably around this time of year, I think last year. And then the design plan that we've spent a few months working through with those two phases shown on page four. There's a specific list of elements that are included in each design phase. And then kind of new to the team, I'm, I'm thinking I'll kind of run through the pieces that are in this document, spend more time on the pieces that are new to you. And then if we have any questions or concerns, we can start back at page one if you'd like to, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So new to the team on the bottom of page five. Our, our team outlined the roles we felt were necessary to make this garden a success. And that includes, at a minimum, and there could be others, administration. We need someone who's the main point of contact for this thing, you know, kind of day and night. So that person needs, could be a volunteer, but probably should be some sort of paid position just given the consistency and reliability we'll need from that person. You know, their phone number theoretically would be the number that gardeners would call if they had a question about access or how do I sign up, et cetera. So they're collecting dues, they're enforcing policy. That's really your boots-on-the-ground person administering this thing. And then obviously some maintenance needs and treasurer needs. And the maintenance, we felt also probably would be a paid position, just given the nature of that work. The treasurer could be a volunteer position or it could also be a paid piece. We, we elected to take out the detail. We had started to think through who, like, should this be a contractor? Could this be township staff? And we decided, let's just take out that nitty-gritty. Let the Parks Commission with Township Board decide what makes the most sense. But we felt that those three roles at minimum were helpful to call out, that this is, you know, this is kind of your staff power we think you need to do this well. And then on the next page goes into membership. And we, we came up with a structure where membership dues do cost something to, this was recommended by Seeds and MSU Extension, that it's helpful for folks to pay in some modest amount to really feel ownership and feel like a stakeholder as part of the garden. But if a family or individual can't afford that, that there could be this pay-what-you-can model so that the garden is accessible to folks of all income levels. So the design includes thirty-four beds. Some of those beds are very large and could be divided further to, to create smaller beds within them. So, you know, if you, essentially what this paragraph ends up saying is, membership is not gonna pay for the garden, especially if you're doing a pay-what-you-can where folks are paying less. So it's, it's really, the fee there is not about making income so much as it is just creating a sense of ownership and community among your, your stakeholders who are using the garden that they're paying in for some reason, that line item won't offset the costs, most likely, of running the space.
Well, the initial cost, I, I understand it won't make up for that. But, you know, if we've received grants, you know, that'd help. But, you know, as far as covering, you know, the annual manage, or management or maintenance, it might cover that.
It, yeah, it's, it's not a, it's, it could, right. I think what the garden team was thinking is that this, they really wanted this to be accessible. So, you know, if, if seventy-five percent of the members aren't paying fifty dollars, that was okay, so long as we can come up with grants and other sources of funding to pick up that gap. But I, I agree, especially if those beds are subdivided and if the fee were, you know, it, it could theoretically cover some of the staffing costs for the space, definitely. We included this piece on training and education and called back to the fifteen people who took the survey and indicated that they were interested in helping to mentor. So we, we knew that, you know, education has always been a really important component of this design. And it's important to the team that there's a reference to that in the management plan. And then at the bottom of page six, and then on page seven is the budget. So this initial incomes table was our best shot at estimating what it would take to get the garden started. So this is not forever, but what, you know, what will it cost to get phase one going? And, and these are potential sources to support that. So you'll see description on the left, and that's the, the entity or the funding source. And then the amount, many are flexible because we just don't know yet what's possible and what, what a strategic application would be. And then the timeline. And again, much of this information will be flexible too. But there are some grants that, that we have consistent timeframes for, so we penciled those in where we could. And I know at our last meeting, Sarah mentioned that, you know, we had, we weren't ready to start writing grant applications, right? So this isn't something you need to take home and start working on today, but this is just, I think, helpful information for the team to see what potential sources are out there. And when you are ready to start writing grants, there could be additional sources to add to this table, right? That come online. But today, as we took a scope, this is, this is what exists. And then on the next page, at the top of page seven, these are the initial expenses to complete garden construction. So what you see here is, is phase one priorities. And those are the priority elements that we pulled out and discussed from the second survey where the community said, I like this, I dislike this. If I had to build this tomorrow, I would choose these elements to build first. So we pulled out those elements first. The amount is TBD, which isn't the, the most helpful thing, but we, it didn't make sense to put a number in, given that the cost will change. When you actually go to build, it's gonna be different. So we could put a range, we could go back and put a range in here because we do have a number from Beckett and Raider on what each of those elements would cost. So if that's useful, I could go back and edit that table, just to give you an idea of, you know, phase one priorities could cost anywhere from this to this.
Well, I mean, I mean, we're gonna have to know some sort of dollar amount for grants and stuff, so...
Yeah, I do think it would help drive the question of, well, what are we asking for and how much are we asking for, right? So, yeah, I think we should fill that in. I honestly think the TBD was just me drafting and thinking I needed to ask Beckett and Raider for that amount, and then I never did. So I think that's an oversight on my part. So I'll go back in and fill those in on the initial expenses.
Yeah, because even initially in our parks and recs, I think it was stating thirty-two thousand. I mean, so that was so far out of it. I think every time it was brought up through last year, it's like, that's nuts, you know? So it's not realistic, but at least we can get some kind of guidance so that we can then start applying for some grants once this gets finalized.
Yeah. And then the long-term budget is, we were trying to estimate, what does it look like once this thing is built? And what does it take to operate the garden on an annual basis? And so just big broad strokes, I think these numbers could adjust significantly. You know, this was just our best guess. We estimated fifteen thousand a year for contractual support. It could be less than that, I think, but trying to be conservative here. And then, oh, okay, so the numbers that are in expense are, that's the parentheses, I'm not an accountant. And then the incomes are, are not parentheses. So the Parks Commission could be a source for ten thousand to fifteen thousand of that budget. Membership could be between zero to two thousand with forty beds, but that number could increase if you subdivided further. And then sponsorships, we just threw a number in just to show what this could look like. So those numbers could vary widely. And it really depends on the team that comes together to support this, where their strengths are. If you come up, you know, if you have a, assemble a team that are just sponsorship rock stars, you could probably triple that number, right? And take some pressure off the Parks Commission budget, et cetera. So this, these numbers are not, you know, meant to be a prescriptive budget by any stretch, but just wanted to get us thinking about what sources there were to support those costs on an ongoing basis. And then the plan ends with just a list of, you know, to do this well, these policies should be developed. And we added a few based on some, some feedback from our partners. So Seeds, for example, added the compost management plan and offered to, to support that, if we were interested.
They're quite busy.
Take a quick step back to the long-term budget. So the contractual estimate is about fifteen thousand and then the, the remaining items below that should calculate to whatever the contractual offset is? Is that...
That would come out of the budget of the Parks Commission, is that correct, Elise? So the fifteen thousand contractual.
Yes.
Is that's just put in as a possibility of a Parks Commission budget. And then that, any of the beds at fifty or pay what you can would be like seventeen hundred or sponsorships.
Well, I'm, maybe I didn't, I, I can go back and tweak this a little bit. So it's meant to, this budget shows both expenses. That's the fifteen thousand is that negative number. And then the income to support the garden is then shown below it. And they don't match up, as they're currently shown. So I guess if the garden operated this way, it would actually be making, it could be making a profit, right? Which that money could then be reinvested back into the garden to host a community, you know, event or, or it, or it could be that the Parks Commission would rather this garden, you know...
I don't know if necessarily this whole concept was to make profit. I was thinking more of a dot org, you know, nonprofit. I know that's what Traverse City Community Garden is.
Right.
Well, the, the only number that I'm really concerned with is, you know, whatever the contractual is because if, let's say it's fifteen thousand a year to take care of the community garden, then that's how much we have to try to, you know, recoup to offset it and then it would be a wash.
Conversation on that fifteen thousand, so just...
I don't think, I don't, I don't think, I think fifteen thousand could be a little high, but...
Exactly. And so I came up with a separate take, which I have a list of, you know, my edits for it. So it's something that is, we can talk and communicate about it. But for right now, where we're at, just adding in that fifteen. But I have some ideas for that, so...
Yeah, we went, we estimated high, you know, hoping it was less. We didn't want to find ourselves in the position of having that, right? That thirty-two thousand number is just a number that will go away. And it's too bad because it's not gonna, right? It's gonna be in the hundreds of thousands, most likely.
Exactly.
So we didn't want to find ourselves in a position where we said, hey, it's only gonna cost you five grand a year to run this thing, and then it ends up costing more. So I do think there's, you know, there's more work. And, and you are the folks to do that work. You know your budget, you know your process. And so, so the team felt like, okay, well, this is the, you know, this is the, the bones and let's hand this back to the Park Commission to really make this real.
So, so that everyone does understand that correctly. You know, the garden policies, all of that on page seven. All those will have to go back and be dissected. So we might want to form another committee type within the Parks Commissioners to come back to the board and suggest, make suggestions. But as far as what Elise has done, she has done her job and to make this presentation, so...
Yeah, no, I, I think it's good, it's very thorough. You know, I like, you know, it's just, I just want to make sure we're... You know, I like, you know, it's just, I just want to make sure we're... You know, whatever that contra... You know, if it's five thousand, let's say, you know, I just want to make sure that there's some sort of, you know, payback towards that in the maintenance costs. You know, I'm all for, you know, funding, you know, five thousand dollars, fifteen thousand, whatever the maintenance is, you know, I have no problems against that. Like, it's, you know, things cost money nowadays, so like, it's... But, yeah, I just want to make sure that there's enough people benefiting from it too, and I think that they would benefit from it, so... I was just trying to understand it, that's all.
Well, it certainly won't offend me if you have questions about my non-accountant budget because I hardly understand it.
This budget is out of bounds.
It makes sense to me, but I'm not an accountant either. I got your budget here.
You know, and some of my suggestions, you know, when Elise was reaching out for the final and that, you know, I had come up with, I'm thinking of a stipend to come from the Parks Commission budget, and I said around seventeen hundred dollars. I actually said fifteen to seventeen, but fifteen might be too low. So, maybe seventeen to two thousand as a stipend each year, to have an administrator, a liaison to the township boards, and to be the treasurer of the monies coming in and out. And my suggestion with any monies being dealt with, that you have that administrator plus another township employee that would have another set of eyes during those transactions, just to keep it on the up and up. But that's minor, major detailing there. But anyway, so that's what I sort of came up with. And, you know, I think a pay what you can fee, that's another whole thing that it carries on a long conversation, and what are the boundaries, the guidelines of that? Some may think, you know, one way, the others may think the other way. I don't know if that's opening a can of worms. You know, my initial thought was free, but for the garden, community garden, to give back something to this community, other than, you know, our parks are a great give back. But, so I agree on the fee, whether or not that fee should be fifty or whatever fee it may be. And that's, again, something to look at. Or maybe do like a fair donation rental. Again, I don't know. You know, I don't see this as a profit-making. It would be nice that it does balance itself out, however we may do with it. And as far as the maintenance, once this is up and going, like the community, Traverse... I keep going back to the Commons. I don't think they have a maintenance, one maintenance person. They may have an administrator. Now, granted, they're a much larger scale. But as far as maintenance, I see that within the policy of being able to have a garden spot, that there's rules and regulations. And if you don't participate in those rules or regulations, you'll be ousted and you'll lose your deposit. But I think everyone should be on a caring for their space. Take care of any trash that they bring in, you know, leave no trash behind. And you'll have fall cleanup. You can either have it as a grouping, or each one obviously will be responsible for cleaning up their plot for the next season. So, again, I don't see pretty much where it would be too much maintenance on that garden.
Yeah, honestly, I...
To qualify someone to be there, it really should be kind of maintenance on its own.
I feel like it would almost just kind of fall under as a duty or responsibility of, you know, the guy who takes care of the parks, you know? I mean, I don't see a whole lot of, like, daily maintenance or going on. I mean, you're not, you know, doing the gardening for them. You're just, you know, if something breaks, you fix it, you know? I mean, it's... So, really, it should be minimal maintenance and...
So, my suggestion, you know, I'll just lay it out there, is a stipend for someone. And also, we want to make sure that we stay within the Master Gardener program of giving back food to the community so we can have some volunteerism hours for the newcomers that are going through that Master Gardener program. So, I will be a stickler on that to make sure that we stay focused on that. So, and keep it simple, keep it straight, narrow, have the rules all figured out and done. But again, I just go back to a person that might want to pick up, you know, during the summer and fall be responsible. It doesn't have to be a daily thing that they have to hang out for eight hours a day, but they should, there should be a contact person. There should be the administrator and a liaison, and that person should be able to deal with the balance sheets. And again, keeping it fairly simple.
Can I ask?
Oh, yeah.
How did the fifty dollars per bed, just how did the estimate come about?
That was a Seeds example. That was what they charge, I think, at the Commons. And I don't know if they do a pay what you can, but they were, you know, Seeds was so helpful in this process as an actual administrator of a garden and offered a lot of our kind of practical recommendations. And they recommended some charge, just again, to build that ownership and ensure that people are using the space. If it's free and promoted as such, free to everybody, folks might be interested, but then not stick with it, and that becomes a maintenance problem and also just a community problem. If the garden's empty, that doesn't achieve the goals.
Right. And again, that, I don't feel that that fifty is set in stone. I think it's high myself, but there should, I guess, be a fee, a dollar. But anyways...
Fifty down is unreasonable. That's pretty easy. Like, that's easy.
I like the pay what you can. I think that's good and make it accessible to everybody because a lot of people probably can't afford a yard, probably can't afford to spend a lot on a yard.
Or even a donation, because some might take, might give more than fifty.
That's what I'm saying. Ask those that can't afford more than fifty for more, maybe start higher, but still have a pay. Like, for those that can't afford fifty, they can't afford a hundred either, but some that can afford fifty could easily afford a hundred as well.
Yeah, that's a good point. Some nonprofits do the, like, you know, pay a hundred and pay for someone else's plot, right? Like, that's an approach you could take too. Like, a sliding scale both ways, if someone were so inclined. We agreed with your kind of inklings Ryan about maintenance. Like, our initial approach was just put this under the township maintenance position, but then we didn't want to put that much... We didn't want to make that decision, you know, for the township.
Yeah, I mean, and I could be, you know, I don't know what this position all entails. You know, like, how much of it is, you know, on the township side of things to fix things? And then how much of it's actually focused on parks?
Right.
So, yeah.
But I agree, it could be a pretty minimal, minimal task. Seeds did caution that, you know, plan on, plan on someone not maintaining their bed. And at that point, you can't say, well, you need to come in and fix this. They're along, you know, they're not connected, they're not going to come back, and, you know, someone else will need to address that. So, they just said, you know, don't go, just go into it with that kind of realistic mentality that, for the most part, everyone will be there and maintaining, but just plan on somebody, you know, at some point.
And to be quite honest with you, if we think, if it actually goes through, that we do have irrigation, that could help fix a lot of, you know, no maintenance with, you know, people not doing their weeding and stuff like that. So, again, all goes back to the rules and irrigation we're hoping to have.
Yeah, so I think, you know, it's an opti... It's a great project and just put enough guardrails in place that when the, you know, just like with zoning, right? It's like, well, if something goes off, we have a rule to help. Any other questions about any of the content we went over or content we didn't discuss?
Oh, thanks. I...
I know Parks, I called up Parks Downstate when we first started this a year ago, and that's what they were doing. They had someone that was given a stipend every year, you know? And it may have only incorporated, you know, half of the year or whatever, but during the season that they would always have a yearly stipend. And they seem to have a pretty successful community garden at the township there. And I have my notes. I could, I just didn't bring them in, which township I called.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of options. You could get like an AmeriCorps Vista to kind of run the program. I mean, there's voluntary groups out there, I mean...
Yeah, Seeds could potentially contract to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you've got good partners. And if you wanted examples of folks who could do it, I'm sure Seeds, MSU, you know, would be happy to offer resources in that way. So, even though the team kind of considers their work done with this plan, there, obviously, Susan has good relationships with Nate, and Jennifer is just an email away, and all those folks are interested in providing support as you go.
So, what's next steps?
So, you just have a couple of changes to make to the management plan. The next step is to get the township board on board with the project. So, we had talked before about some sort of a joint meeting potentially to do that, to talk about it, to come up with a plan. So, I think, you know, having this management document together so they know funding-wise, cost-wise, what happened in the past, and then the plan, and kind of have some sort of a meeting to say, okay, we want to move forward with funding on this.
Do you foresee any red flags or anything that they may have concerns with?
I'm not sure. I, you know, in speaking with Beth about it, I think... She kind of told me that it was all going to be funded or maintenance was going to be done kind of by the garden and the group itself. But, you know, if the Parks Commission, it's your budget, and if you can work it into your budget as far as money-wise, or maybe knowing with the dollar amount, fifteen thousand, you know, it's not a hundred thousand. You know, that may help to alleviate any of those concerns. And I don't know where that came from, or I may have misunderstood too. So, that would be kind of, I would think the money part usually is the board issue, but...
This is my suggestion or thoughts. Elise, will you have then that template? So, if we decide up the road that that figures or anything needs to be changed within that template, that we'll have access to being able to change that before we make a presentation to the board or before we finalize this? We will? So, do you send that then to Beth?
Yeah, I can, I'll package up all the materials from the project and include an editable, editable version of this document so that you can keep it updated as you go. Yeah.
And my suggestion is, is once Elise gets those figures to be determined, gone away, I'd like to meet with Beth and discuss, you know, what her thoughts are on the presentation to the board.
Okay.
And maybe clean up some little details that need to be done from there. And then I think we're ready to go. Although, I don't know, what do you, what does everyone else think? Do we need to have the garden policies in place? Possibly before we make that presentation to the board? That'd be the garden rules enforcement, the garden signage, the annual budget, the Facebook page, the gardener, contact list, winterization plan.
I don't think those have to be necessarily in place as, I mean, I mean, you do want to have something worked out, but, you know, a lot could change in the policies. You know, there could be, you know, a, you know, a time restriction when, how late somebody could be here or something, you know? You know, a lot of the stuff we might not know until it's actually built.
Well, I would hope we have all the policies in place before we open the doors.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, I mean, we don't even know like how many beds there are, like, who's going to get, you know, preference over what, you know? Where, I mean, there's a lot to figure out.
And again, that's why I thought maybe a discussion with Beth first, to see what she's thinking on this. So, I will say that the Commons, they are sold out. I checked on the way over, so...
I think that Land Conservancy is doing one too.
Oh, really? Okay.
I think so, out in Acme. They did last year. I'm pretty sure they're planning on it this year too. Yep. That's coming more together as well.
Okay, so we'll get that document. Susan, you want to chat with Beth, and then we can work on trying to schedule the joint meeting between the two groups to talk about it?
Would it be a joint meeting or just presenting to the board trustees? Or is that what?
We can figure out those details. Yeah, because I thought at one time a presentation, at a minimum of presentation, the nice about having a joint is that then it's kind of, everybody can talk. It's all kind of a level playing surface.
So, Elise, in your job duties, are you part, would you be part of that, that when it goes to the board? Or what?
I can be. I mean, it's up to you. I think that would be probably the last step for my contract, or this could be the last step once I finalize the TBDs, which is what I added to my to-do list.
I think, Mike, go ahead.
Well, I think, you know, it'd be good for you as the Parks Commission representative part of that to go. And then maybe the board chair and Elise, if you're available. You know, whenever that time, if it's a presentation to a board or something, or if it's a joint meeting, obviously, we'll all be here anyway, so like...
I think that's a good suggestion, Ryan.
Sure.
Cory wasn't part of that, was she? Or she stopped?
She sort of stepped out for time being, yeah.
Okay, I didn't want to exclude her.
Yeah.
I think maybe inviting Chantel to, to attend and maybe co-present.
Nate would be very good. Seeds, if we can get them. So, all of that would be a great presentation.
Be a great support and attendance and all that.
Yes.
I think it'd be...
Great support.
Everybody at the podium or anything, but...
But if they had particular questions on any one of those breakdowns, that they would have those people here, so...
It's Vietnam. Everything will come together.
All right. Anything else?
Oh, you bet.
It's been a long journey.
Thank you, Elise. Is there anything else for the community garden?
I'll just send back a document without TBDs and then wait to hear from you, Sarah, or Susan on next steps with the township board.
Yeah, sounds like a plan.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elise.
All right, moving on to business before the Parks Commission, nine B. We need to schedule the parks tour visit. Looks like maybe proposing May fifteenth.
Yeah, that's your regular meeting night, and so instead of being at six, starting maybe at five-thirty, if you can. The reason I suggest that date, I know this is the second meeting, we've talked about it, is that I'm not going to be here for that meeting, and so I think it'd be great if you're already going to be together to take advantage of that, if that works.
Yeah.
So, that would just be our main meeting?
Yeah.
It would just be, which park do you guys start at usually? Usually you just start at one park, they call the order, but you're in, go to the next park.
I wrote it.
But I'll get the, I have the list on my other notes. So, I'll put togeth... I can put together the agenda, like, the list, and that way you'll know where to go. And then, but starting at five-thirty, so we'll get that posted, and...
Okay, so, I'm sorry, so we will be on May fifteenth?
May fifteenth at five-thirty PM. Instead of regular meeting, we'll be doing a parks tour. Since Sarah won't be here, I think that's probably the best night to do that. It looks like from last month's meeting, we had Pine Grove to Jen's, the Holiday Woodlands, to the Water Tower property, Killingsworth, and then finish up at Grace. So, got six parks there.
But Sarah, you're going to come up with the list, right? I was too busy with my appointment.
Yeah.
Did you get Killingsworth?
Yes.
Yes.
And so, when will we have then our regular May meeting?
We can, you want to talk about that now, or do you want to wait until the upcoming meeting dates? I don't, we can talk about it whenever you want, doesn't matter to me.
Because now, we're just taking our regular... Now, will you do, or someone here in the township do the acknowledgement there on the public board that we're switching that and all that?
Yes, yep, we'll take care of all of that. So, I'll work with Leslie to get all the paperwork in order. The only thing you'll have to do at the meeting is somebody will have to keep track of the call to orders, adjourn at each park, and take notes on what you are looking at. So, you can figure that out the night of, whoever shows up last. Well, that's not fair because you're...
Are we going to do another, a second special meeting then in May? Is that what we're doing?
That's what Susan had mentioned just before the meeting, that maybe doing a special... That's what Susan had mentioned just before the meeting, that maybe doing a special meeting in May to talk about any other business that we have. We'll be working through the park and rec plan, other sections.
We still should have a regular meeting. We shouldn't skip out on that because we have a lot going on here right now.
And we'll be getting ready for the open house too, because the open house is for, scheduled June fifth.
So we already have a few items.
For the park plan, so.
So what day is good for everyone? Do we want to move it down to the twenty-second of May, of following Monday? Monday?
I don't know. I have a hold on my calendar for the twenty-second. So I don't know if I'm available yet for that or not.
Because the eighth, the eighth would be the board meeting.
Right.
So we can't do, and Cory can't make it.
How about Tuesday, the sixteenth?
Let me look and see. Let me look at my calendar and tell you which days I have open and that may be easier for you. How about the twenty-fourth? Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
It's fine with me.
No.
I am volunteer at Kyle Cancer Center for their plantings.
Okay.
I'm not available on the twenty-fourth.
I'm off tomorrow.
What, do you want to?
Tuesday, the twenty-third?
Oh, two meetings at night already.
Oh, do you? Well, that's not a good.
Do, I mean, we could pick the twenty-second. I could check tomorrow to see if my meeting, if that's going to, if we need to have that meeting or not. Or I may be able to have someone else go instead of myself. So would the twenty-second work for everyone else? Okay, let's do that. And I will double check to make sure, the room should be available, but in case there's anything special. So I'll follow up and send you a quick email and confirm all of that for you, but let's pencil that in.
That's our second meeting?
Yes. You're going to get worn out here. Because we're doing, yeah, and then two weeks later you'll have the open house.
We've seen each other a lot.
So in the open house, you don't, wouldn't have to come, if you can't make to the open house, you can't make it. Or if you can swing by for a little bit, that's helpful. The biggest thing is for, you know, me to be there to help guide it, but I will need a couple of extra hands.
What time is the open house?
Four o'clock. What is it, four to six?
I think it's four to six. Let me pull it up. Yeah, four to six. We're going to do it here in the parking lot if we can. If not, we'll have it inside.
So if Sarah cannot make it on the twenty-second, should we still go ahead with regular meeting?
Yeah, I think, we'll see what kind of business we have. You, I mean, you could talk about the park and rec plan without me. You might just have more questions that aren't answered, but, or any other business that we might have to work through. So I'll, I will, hopefully I'll be here. I just, I think it'll be okay. But, I mean, like I said, find somebody else.
The, for the tour, can we have those a little early? Are you going to do like a form and?
Yeah. Yep.
I see there's some good information already given in the packet.
Yeah, so what I included in the packet was last year's information. So in here you have kind of your report out that Jake put together on your tour, so the meeting notes for that. And then there's a spreadsheet that was put together later, kind of laying everything out, who's responsible, what's been done, notes on that. So, and speaking to Beth about that spreadsheet, she's going to be working through and will have for your, before your parks tour, what items were completed. Because this was done last June, July. And so get this updated to see what's left.
This one here?
Yes. Yep. What's left on that list, if anything, or, you know, what's going on. I see a lot of these for the, at the bottom that talk about the Parks Commission, had to do with the ADA audit. So now that we're going to be talking about that, maybe there's some items that we can deal with. But, so this list will be updated for you as well.
So are we doing these five plus the water tower? I'm sorry if this was already addressed, which I think it kind of was.
Yeah, I think we, it's the same as last year, just adding the water tower as the sixth.
Right, that's what I mean. These five plus the water tower.
Actually, Arbutus.
Oh, that's right.
That's really.
Arbutus is off, so.
Oh, so then we're back to five?
Back to five.
Yeah, okay.
Are we going to send a notice? Like when's the newsletters go out?
Newsletters, um, are usually, I think they do them with the tax bills, so that doesn't go out till July.
Like I said, like are we going to somehow let people know that?
I'm sure Beth has thought about that and I'm sure it'll get well complained about.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know people.
I mean, once they see the moving trucks or whatever's going in there.
If we start talking about it now, maybe it'll be less of a shock.
Remember, there were like notices all over for last summer and then it never like started, right? Wasn't that, didn't we like have notices out that the parks, that Arbutus Five was going to be under construction, then it never started?
I think people were.
There's sinkholes or something to address.
To hear that, but they never did, but the sinkholes were beyond belief.
I mean, I was supposed to, yeah, we were supposed to move into the construction, but never, never worked out.
And that, and I think they're finalizing that, all that, so that should start this summer. So, anytime actually.
Do they have like a hard start date for that, Sarah?
I do not have that.
I think there were some budgeting things they had to.
Yeah, they're working on still filing the, all the proper forms with the state for the MDNR. So I don't have a start date on that.
But it's soon, soon to be.
Hopefully. All right, so I think we got the meeting stuff figured out for the parks tour and then the rescheduled regular meeting date, the following Monday. All right, moving on to item nine C, park accessibility audits.
So we handed out hard copies at the last meeting, so they weren't in your hard copy packet this time, but they were in the digital copies. So I think that the best way to deal with it is just pick whatever park and then anybody make comments that you have instead of going through page by page. Because some of them are, you know, kind of minor. What I'm looking for is if there are some items that maybe we should.
Right away.
Yep, that are either low hanging, that could be done by our existing maintenance or anything that needs immediate attention that we should be resolving right now.
So I, I went through mine and I put on each front cover what they were and what number they were given.
Yep.
So to make the process faster. And I assumed you probably wanted like, or we should present like the ones that are our number two that need to get done and three could be debatable. And some of them could be, I mean, these are going to be a long-term thing. I know, I think in a nutshell, looking these over, we might have to get a designer to do a lot of access routes throughout. It seems like, that seems to be the common blanket in all of these is the accessibility routes to these areas.
Yeah, yeah. So do you want to start, or, why don't we start with Arbutus Lake? Any comments related to Arbutus?
You know, I, this is the only one I did not do because I felt it's not, I mean, we can review it, but I think we could maybe not spend too much time on it because a lot of this is going to change.
Right.
And especially if it's not going to be even open this year. We should keep the report and maybe we can circle back around. But again, do you guys feel that anything's going to be?
So I think a lot of it will be touched already. But is there anything that was kind of outstanding about Arbutus in that report that you, anybody want to make mention of?
Well, to be honest with you, this was the last one and I ran out of time.
Okay, well, we can circle back to it.
I read every page of all of these. Except Arbutus, I figured, oh, you know, they're going to be cleaning a lot of that up anyways.
Yeah, everything was engineered to be ADA accessible at Arbutus Five, so.
Again, I don't know how much time we want to spend on it.
Do they have any number one priorities for this highly loaded?
Anything with the two. So like the ramp, you know, that goes over the river, it looks like they want, again, the, the clearing, you know, because that's not accessible because of the foliage over there on that little bridge, on the different levels of the wood, the sidewalking. But again, all that's going to go away. It looks like that quarter max, that drop that goes from ground up to the walkway. Again, they're stating that that's too high. And again, accessibility routes should be added to more areas where the park is accessible to all. So again, we don't have that. That really is going to be done in the constructing, the new phase. And most of it was the unleveling of surfaces.
A lot of those surfaces.
The grabbing surface of the handrail, the walkway contains abrupt vertical edges. And they state that again. I know they mentioned, and I think in our plans, we were going to move, or did it not get in the final plans? The handicap area was going to be moved because all the action was on the totally opposite. So you had to have a handicapped person access the interior of the park to go all the way across. You know, that they should be the most, the best spot. So I think that was one of them, in the picnic area. And again, it just states the routing surfaces are not firm or stable. We had that kind of in two or three of these other ones too. Again, these are great reports. And of course, the bathroom, we won't even go into the Arbutus one. That's just.
Right, and that's all going to be worked on anyways.
So at a glance, that's what I see.
I think we're all comfortable moving on from.
What about Jen's Park then?
Parking there is just really busy. It's hard to get anywhere.
Did you say Jen's or Grace?
Jen's.
They had just one number two, which means you want to get that done as soon as possible. That was a light switch. And we had that noted in, oh, in, in Grace also. No more than five pounds of pressure per turn. So if we could maybe change that light switch out. And then they talked a lot about the lavatory sink area. But again, the rest of these are all threes and fours. That might be more of a contractual. Do you guys want to hear them or do you not want to hear the threes and fours?
Wait, for.
For Jen's.
Wasn't that DNR money that helped fund that? Because wouldn't that restroom fall into that? And if so, it should be accessible.
Right.
I don't know if DNR funded that one.
I don't remember.
I don't, I don't think so, but that would be great to research that one. The DNR, when we went to do the kayak launch and that, that's when we had that, the DNR involved in all of that. So.
Or did it change maybe? Maybe some of the regulations changed or something since it was constructed?
That, that very well could be the case.
So the light switch, I mean, I think that's something that we can put on the list and we can let maintenance know about that, that we'd like to put that as a project.
And as far as the number threes at Jen's, I know.
I mean, that seems like it.
Do you need to move the bench a little bit and put some insulation around the pipes?
Yeah, well, threes are remove the bench in the bathroom so there's more room accessibility to the sinks. And then the soap dispenser is out of reach, so that could be a fix. And add a loop or a u-handle to the door, because that was another pivoting point. The door swings, turn maybe those and reverse that because the door is swinging and there's not enough room for a wheelchair to get in there. And then the fours are, the lavatory, the, the clear floor space is not a minimum of thirty wide by forty-eight clearance. So again, that might have to be fine too. The toilet needs to be minimum seventeen to nineteen inches from the wall, which obviously it must not be. And then we can all go into the, this is the number four also. Beach access has protruding objects and the greenery maintenance needs to be done. So maybe that could also be done from maintenance. Meaning, I think they say eighty inches headway and then another thirty or forty-eight clearance pathway. I wrote it down somewhere. So maybe that, because they were saying the beach access has protruding objects.
Yeah.
And that, that's that wood walkway. But Cory said that the water is at a low level right now. But who's to say where that's going to end up yet, you know? So anyways. So that could be done.
Yeah, I think that like the greenery maintenance, that'll be something that could happen through, you know, this was done last fall. So it was full grown versus the spring. When you go out there even, you may say, what are they talking about? So you may see some of it, but.
And you know, if they contract that out, I mean, here we have the sheets and it shows pictures of exactly, and the measurements of what exactly it needs to be.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a no-brainer.
So the light switch, I wonder if that could be changed to a motion sensor?
Right, probably. You know, now we have that technology, no.
I mean, seems to make sense.
Yeah, that crank dial. Yeah. Yeah, so we'll, we'll add that to the list. And we'll probably, what we'll do is probably take your notes from your site visits and then, you know, add a couple of these things in there so that it ends up on the parks list.
Yeah.
That'll work. Okay. Grace McDonald?
They had a lot of them. That surprised me.
That surprised me too.
A lot of twos. One, two, three, four. Yeah, equal twos and threes. These are kind of, even the twos are going to be, except for the, the soap dispenser again and the hand blower, suggest moving those. And again, the door.
Yep.
The lower coat, lowered the coat rack or the coat hook. And the threshold door, no more higher than a half inch. So to me, those items could be done by a maintenance. And then, then it gets into, does anyone else want to talk or you want me just to continue?
I'm, I'm looking around. I'm looking at the baby changing station right now.
And then they mentioned the tennis door. And that surface is not stable and it needs to be, I believe, forty-eight inches travel. Minimum door travel. And that ground, if you look at it, it's very uneven where you walk through that gate to get onto the tennis courts. Wheelchair spaces provided in an assembly area with fixed seating. So they're saying that's like for the, the fixed seating, like the baseball diamond. And then the other one that we could probably. And then the other one that we could probably work on, which is a four, is the benches. Picnic tables with removable seating or open end. Need more at least twenty percent of mobility features on the picnic tables. That was also mentioned in Killingsworth. So maybe we could set some money aside and buy some of those picnic tables that they're talking about, either circular one or open-ended ones, or removable benches to handle wheelchair accessibility. And then the other super main thing is no accessibility within our things, like the pavilions to the baseball diamond, to the softball field. There's no access route, that key word access route. So again, that is also noted in Killingsworth, Pine Grove, Grace, and not mentioned in Jen's. But, and I'm sure it was mentioned, Abe was mentioned in Arbutus at a glance. So that would, to me, we'd have to, maybe an engineer could come up with that. I mean, that's another whole thing that won't happen this year, but that needs to, so we are working towards that goal.
And even like the multipurpose field out there, even if they got to the field, you know, they can't get very far because it's so bumpy and needs like, I mean, I mean, do we have any groups that use that field right now by reservation, or?
That's what I was going to ask, even kind of the stadium seating or that fixed seating, how frequently that's used? I mean, not to say that if it's, you know, used once, we should still have it accessible, but is it, should it be high priority because it's used every night during the week, or?
I think that every time there's a game, it's being used.
Yeah, I'm thinking more along the lines of replacement, you know. You know, the bleachers, I can't recall their condition, but I just know for the field because I remember walking on it and like, yeah, how can anybody play on this without, you know, rolling an ankle or like?
I think they, doesn't someone, a team or something always play out there for practice soccer, I think?
It could just be them going there though to use it. I don't know if they actually reserve it. Well, I, I mean.
Sorry.
Well, I was bringing it up because I know field demand is, you know, it's in high demand right now.
Oh, is it? Okay, well, there you go.
The more field space available, it will get used if it's, you know, in decent shape.
Yep, okay. I know that fencing was kind of scary, needs to just have a good coat of.
Yeah.
Paint on, put on the fencing to bring it up to snuff.
It's a great space, though.
Mm-hmm, sure is.
Seems like, yeah, we should.
Lot of grass to mow.
Yeah. But there's no irrigation there, so it might not grow as fast.
And Grace also on the trails, they didn't rate it, but trails need to provide passing spaces at intervals of a thousand feet if it's not wide enough. Trails with obstacles, half inch greater found. So that was like sticks there or.
Tree roots.
Right. And also, we need to have that vertical clearance of eighty inches. And if you don't have that vertical clearance, because trees were, you know, bowing over and that, bending over, that, to at least have guardrails twenty-seven inches from the ground. So just do, and that's another whole thing that we could really make all those pathways between Killingsworth and Grace, bring those up to, I mean, there's great potential with those.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, they're doing, they're doing trail clearing anyways, so would, I'll have a conversation with Beth to, you know, I'm sure she's read through these, but make sure that they're kind of trimming the trails at least. Some of the other work, I don't know that that's included in it, but we can at least, they're out there trimming. Let's trim them to be the right height and width and things if we can, and.
The trimming should be pretty easy, but the roots.
The roots, yeah, that's.
I mean, that's going to be a costly.
I'm wondering if we looked at these audits and, you know, if we were to give it to a group like, like youth worker seeds and be like, you know, what are you guys able to do on this list?
Right.
Then what, you know, what kind of a cost would, would it be? Because I mean, they got teams, you know, all kinds of teams, and they could get it done probably quick and efficiently.
They're looking for help wanted, too. I mean, they are on overload, their needs. I mean, really, it's a great, great cause.
They're recruiting, yeah, they're recruiting and got, you know, a good, good group going so far this year, it sounds like, so.
Well, and this is the recruitment time anyways for that program.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying it's good opportu, I mean, there's even, you know, Conservation District and those, but, you know, I'm thinking more, a lot of these groups are still kind of, you know, available to get it done, I guess, you know. I think at Conservation District, there's more like, more maintenance demanding for like building boardwalks and stuff, but.
Well, I can chat with Beth about that and see if she's comfortable with us reaching out to see if there's some items that maybe we can get some close to.
Yeah, I mean, it'd just be good to have that relationship, you know, especially, you know, if, you know, if there's a period between employees.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll see if that's an option.
It sure would be nice if we had money to be able to hire a firm or a lawn care that was very new exactly, you know, these requirements, and just go to those parks and get it done, you know, as far as the lawn care goes. And then it's a clean slate, you know, to start there. But also a note, too, as it entered in my mind, talking about seeds and that, you know, up the road here, I think we shall keep open-minded of eventually the recycling and the composting, that it's going to eventually be countywide to even township-wide. So even though we have hopefully a community garden going in back there with composting that it's actually, I think, within the next five years, we're going to see some major, major changes coming as all of us, as residents, all for good, obviously.
Like in requirements to do it, or?
Yeah, or having compost sites, you know, like your recycle sites on Lefraniere and that.
Yeah.
It's going to be, I believe it is my vision, in five years, we're going to see a big, major turn in that. So something to think about that we need to be ahead of that, because it's coming. Just like the rails to trails, and then now, you know, to schools. So pathways to schools or whatever it's called, how it's. Yeah, what's that?
Safe school routes?
There you go, safe school routes, yeah. Who would ever thought that they'd rip up the railroad tracks for a trail? So just looking forward in the future, composting is, I think, going to be a good topic, too. Grace, though, I didn't get the gist of it, but I could go back later. They were saying about something about uneven tennis courts and leveling of those and leveling it so it has water runoff, and so that was a major thing.
Didn't we talk about that at one of the meetings?
I thought that was on one of the pickleball courts, wasn't it?
Well, the tennis courts are pickleball, it was in the report here.
Yeah, it seems like we talked, I thought we talked about it at one of the, at one of the parks meetings, unless it was a side conversation I had about the, that they collect water on the courts and maybe we should look at regrading them or resurfacing them, or maybe have they just been resurfaced?
Just in the last.
Yeah, I thought they were resurfaced recently.
Nine years ago?
Okay.
You know how time flies.
I think that was just before my time.
Yeah, it was a major, I mean, we waited years and years and years, and it finally, I mean, came through. And that, that, those courts, those are used for pickleball. And they're nice, they're a very nice court over there for resurfacing.
Yeah, so that'll be a bigger project we'll have to budget for sometime in the future.
I'm going to start talking about leading into.
That was one of them, that's where the uneven spaces. And the door needed to be more forty-eight inch.
I was surprised with all the bathroom stuff.
A lot of it seems like it could have been after, that like where the soap dispenser goes. I mean, when they build a bathroom, a lot of that stuff, the fixtures and stuff come after, you know, like, I mean.
And I think over the years, the ADH requirements were not so pronounced as they are today, which is good, but I think back then, when those were built, just were not part of the equation.
Yeah, Killingsworth?
They brought up running slope width of path, resting areas firm and stable. Oh, so they were saying the width of the path, you know, for passing, sort of like what they said with Grace. Resting areas need to be more stable and firm. And then for, they just had threes and fours on here. Accessibility to, again, the accessibility access route to play equipment and adding accessibility pieces to the picnic tables. And again, it was the picnic tables need to clear space, removable seat or open-ended. Leveling of ground around the picnic area, if I remember right, there was a step up there. And signage, non-glare reflective, which we should, I mean, we did those signs years ago. I held on to that committee to get the, all the universal signs so we're all sort of matching in the parks. But I think we had to go the roundabout again, or if there's any, I don't know, grants or anything out there, but the signage, non-glare reflective, raised letters, braille symbol characters, contrasting background. So whatever the lettering is, and the background will be contrasting. So if you do white letters, it should be dark background, or if you do dark letters, do white background. But the braille or the raised letters on the signage and non-glare. And the surface at the, the play equipment, the surfacing there.
So as far as the path, it mentioned.
Yeah.
You know, so sixty inches, and then every thousand feet, it has to be like twice as wide.
But I thought, I was, I thought I just saw where they taught, like the path work mentions when you're reconstructing it more than, didn't, I may be mistaken, but I would, thought I just even saw it.
So in my head, that, I mean, that seems like, you know, something that's fairly achievable. I mean, you just hire, once again, one of those groups, I mean, that's kind of like their specialty is to develop trails and.
Yeah, so it sounds like that trail, yeah, the recommendations are made with possible advising for future upgrading. So they didn't have a priority on them, but if that was something that we want, the whole trail essentially needs to be upgraded.
I mean, they'll be able to kind of go the trail and see, you know, if there's a.
And more resting places along that trail, especially there at Killingsworth. Because really, there isn't too many places where you rest. You got the sign there, go left or right, but there's not.
Isn't there a bunch? There's a bunch out there.
Well, and resting places might be easier to fit in right now versus trying to expand the trail or the topography of it, you know, if there's a couple of spots that could be cleared out for a couple of benches, maybe that would make sense.
And the height, you know.
Yeah.
Or maybe there's a way, every thousand feet, there's a rest spot.
And they were saying passing spaces, you know, a path is a path, but it needs to be wider than a path so people can pass, and if not, you know, have those interval spaces every thousand feet.
Well, and generally, the paths out there are pretty narrow, so I don't, there's a lot there, like down a cliff, so I don't, you know.
I think it's designed as a one-way, too. It's technically how it was designed.
Well, again, they were looking at it with the disability net part there, too.
Yeah. I mean, I think picnic tables, we definitely add that to the list when we're talking about picnic tables with Grace. Maybe some resting places, if there's an opportunity to throw in some couple of benches, and then trail clearance, when they're out doing that trail maintenance, making sure that they're complying with that.
And again, which is a bigger, number four, is in all the parks that access routes between.
Yes, between facilities and things, yeah. Okay. The next one, Pine Grove.
They didn't mention too, too much of anything about the bathroom in Killingsworth. Pine Grove, number two, which is important, provide a level surface not greater than one-point-two slope grade. Maintain a sixty-inch diameter of play components. Surface makes it difficult to turn around. So that was, again, that play feature.
The one priority one is just a bench has a greater slope than five percent. I see like a low-hanging fruit we can address.
And then for threes were clear ground space for bench with one side adjoining access route or trail and bench site on concrete. So there's saying to put the bench on concrete and then have one side of that bench be along an access route, which we don't have any access routes. And then assessability route to play components and transfer steps to play area. They can only be a certain height, a major eight inch, not over eight inches, and I think that is. Oh, and also at Grace, before we forget, entering into that playground, that entrance. Play area not accessible, no clear floor space for an approach, thirty inch by forty-eight inch. So I think that, that little ramp that's there at Grace wasn't that.
I thought the approach is the four.
And, well, and the approach, because you look at it, it's just that dirt, uneven and that, so. Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I'm all set.
Okay. So that's all of those. So we kind of have a quick list of items. I'd encourage you when you're out, you know, doing your park inspections to take a look at everything, but we'll make sure to get those on for maintenance this summer, if they can get to most of it, or if we're working on things already, so.
And actually, we should bring these with us.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Be good.
All right, moving on to item nine D, Park and Rec Plan Review, Section One and Two.
So I'll just, you know, really quickly, I'm going to make the assumption that you've read through this, and if you have any comments, you can let me know, or if you, if we need to discuss anything. As I mentioned, there's five sections to the plan. These are just the first two, the community description, so that's a lot of your demographic information, talent, talking about the community. And then two is your administrative structure and what that functions like. Three will be your.
Now wait, I'm lost.
Yes. So I'm just giving a quick overview.
Okay, I'm saying, these five sections in here?
These are the five sections I'm writing for you.
Oh.
Are what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're going to have, your new plan is going to have five sections and an appendix. It's going to have the community description, where we talk about the community, what it looks like. Two is the administrative structure, how you function. Three is going. Three is going to be your, uh, park inventory, and so I'm gonna go out to each of the parks, kind of like what you're doing with your park visits already and kind of looking at everything that has a little bit of accessibility with it. So we have your accessibility audits already for, you know, some of the parks, so that'll be helpful. The fourth chapter is all about public participation, so we're gonna talk about your survey and, your survey and your open house. And then five is kind of your goal is implementation. So we're gonna take a look at what you have in your current plan, see what's already been accomplished, come up with some new ideas. And so we'll be working a little bit on that, probably, um, at your May meeting, because that's what I want your open house to kind of focus on, if these are the correct goals and getting public input on those for how to move forward in the next five years. So you have, yes, the first two, community description here, that talks a lot about your demographics for, uh, East Bay Township. Sir, I was gonna say, is there anything that, anybody has any comments on, keeping in mind that you will be reviewing this again as a full draft? So right now, you may have questions and seem a little confused or want to know what about this that may be answered later on, um, when you're reading it as a whole document as well.
Okay, and you used all these stats on the population, all from these preceding pages?
Correct.
Okay. And, so really, going back to this, the old one, it was really kind of...
Yeah. The only thing, right, the only thing will be, um, really your goals and any, excuse me, changes to the parks or anything like that. Because all your demographics really have changed, because we had new census in 2020 versus that plan, you know, was after fifteen, it was quite a ways after the census, so you're using different, different data for them.
Oh, the last parks plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so now that I'm on the same page, um, so we got community description and then admin.
Right.
Structure.
Right.
And then at our next meeting, we are covering...
Next meeting, you'll probably be doing your goals and implementation, because you're still doing community engagement, so I can't finish that whole chapter yet. And I haven't done the parks inventory yet. But it may be kind of hard with that, too, because we're, you're doing your parks tour kind of in the same time, so we'll have to see what that looks like. We may have enough to talk about that I gotta add in to the inventory.
And when we do the inventory, would things like the water tower be included in that?
Yeah, so we need to add in Holiday Woodlands and the Water Tower property, um, you know, as parks and what we want to do.
The pines, that's still just sitting there.
Yeah. You know, and so for, like, for example, that Water Tower property, we've talked about it a couple of different times, that we really need to do some park planning on it, that specific property.
So maybe better define them, define parks and properties that are being managed.
Right.
Our waiting development, I guess.
Or even, yeah, future.
Yeah, you could do that, yeah.
Yeah.
How many acres, what's useful?
Right.
Because I, I think that might be helpful to a lot of people, too, just to kind of understand, because, you know, there might be ideas for the Water Tower, but, you know, that very well might not be in our hands, you know, ten years from now, or...
Right, yeah. Yeah, so we'll do a little paragraph about that park and then kind of say, you know, where it's at. So kind of you look at Holiday Woodlands and Water Towers, we're in planning phases, you know, so in the next five years, we wanna at least have a plan done for them, hopefully be somehow developing some of the infrastructure that we've put into that plan.
So you want us for the next meeting to work on what?
I don't want you to do anything, I just want you to read, to read the chapters. Yeah, so you don't need to think about next, next month's meeting, just these two chapters that you have in front of you, either related to the demographic section, um, any of that, or the administrative structure, if I missed anything, if there were any corrections.
The demographics sounds really good.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Good, good. And like I said, feel free to continue to read over it. This isn't in its final format, it's in a draft, it'll, it will look a little bit different, um, but very, some, you know, like your charts and stuff will look similar, but...
So this nineteen ninety-two, that's when we bought Jen's Park, the point six one parcel with a hundred feet in, it's only facial recovery.
Okay. So any, any comments?
The organization chart could possibly be changing, too.
Right.
Depending on how...
Right.
Positions change.
Yeah, so that's a little flexible, but we'll have that nailed down before you get through a final draft.
Part-time parks manager, is that...
Yeah, so, I mean, the next, the next paragraph talks about it a little more, that's probably, should be full-time.
Two nineteen.
Parks manager and support staff, part-time support staff.
So, is that, uh, you know, what we're, uh, what our future plans and hopes are for? Is that, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still looking at that administrative structure. The Board of Trustees budget, where it's highlighted? You know, is this, you know, something that's being defined currently with...
That's, I mean, this is what we currently have, and so the organizational chart will make it up to, you know, probably some sort of arrow, you know, bubble with an arrow that shows how it flows and how the, like, an organizational, organizational structure would look, but this is just kind of a list currently of, you know, you have the Township Board, the Parks Commission, and then your staff.
But, yeah, I saw that, that, you know, the, you know, the part-time manager and then additionally, the Township employs staff for parks maintenance. The Parks Department has a Parks Manager, one part-time support staff, and one full-time and one part-time groundskeeper. So...
Do you think that's not, and I can check with Beth on what they would...
I, I read it as, it sounds like it's like four individuals.
Yeah, yep.
Definitely three.
From what I understand, it's saying there's the staff, you know, so like, say Beth is kind of the part-time manager, like, doing, like, what needs to be done. Then you have the support staff, which is consisted of Bob and someone that helps some, and then potentially extra seasonal, and then, um, staff members.
Yeah, I don't know, the groundskeeper, part-time groundskeeper, I thought we just had a part-time staffer in the summer, and then Bob was one full-time year-round. And that part-time person, wasn't it last year, um, was just for, I think they advertised, actually, the last two summers, just for summer help.
Well, if it's, I mean, it should probably be marked as seasonal or, you know, temporary.
We can maybe clean that up a little bit, so...
I mean, it, I mean, I would love to have that full-time manager, you know, that'd be cool, but...
Well, I, I believe the Township does need, uh, full-time maintenance. I mean, obviously, the parks are gonna be full swing, but in the wintertime, you still have general maintenance throughout the winter of those parks, not to mention any repairs done here, so I don't know what, um, the Board is thinking for that position, but I feel we do need, um, a full-time maintenance person. And a part-time, obviously, for the summer, just to deal with the parks.
Any other comments?
Oh, go ahead. You could clarify it.
Yeah, I'll clean that part up for you. Any other comments, questions?
No.
No, not this time? Like I said, you'll get to look at it again, so don't feel like this is your only chance or this is set in stone by any means. So I'll just...
I wasn't trying to nitpick it either, I was just trying to understand it better.
That's, that, the administrative section is usually the smallest, but is sometimes the most difficult. Like, that's where I get a lot of comments, honestly, when I'm working through parks, because it's, well, no, we do this, or you write it, and then it's like, well, we changed how we're doing that this year, you know, so it's always, it's very, it's own animal.
You could have what's existing and then, you know, what you're aiming for. Like, I mean, we know that we're gonna need some sort of staffing or, you know, for community, you know, there's gonna be some sort of volunteer management. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, it would, could very well fall into a role of a, a manager, a Parks Manager, Office Manager, you know, a designated role to do that kind of thing, and, um, then the grounds aspect of it, but, you know, you know, there's more than just parks that the grounds people would be doing correct.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how it's put together, but, I mean, yeah, I could see the challenges, so...
Okay, okay. Well, that works for me, then. We'll come back with more next month.
Sounds good. Thanks, Sarah. All right, public comment? There's no public. Upcoming meeting dates, looks like May fifteenth will be the Parks Tour at five thirty PM, and Sarah's gonna put together the list of parks in order. I think we were starting at Jen's from our last meeting we discussed, but look for that email.
Since that meeting has already been planned for as a regular commission date, because we're moving it a half hour early, just want to remind the website.
Yes.
Yeah, Sarah's gonna...
That's something I would totally forget, my job.
Yeah, so technically, it's on your regular meeting day, but it's an adjusted meeting time, so it's kind of treated like a special meeting, so...
All right.
Plus, you're gonna be out in the field anyways, so...
All right, so just look for that information, and just remember five thirty. Then, uh, the proposed regular meeting day would be Monday, May twenty-second at six PM. One hour, all right. Anything else? All right, meeting Monday, April seventeen, twenty twenty-three, is adjourned at seven thirty-three, or, six, sorry.
Seven forty.
All right. All right. That clock's a little hard to read.